Where is my?
... Yes. People don't get one to indicate on the sign-in sheet. Please sign in and they'll indicate we'll make sure they get.
Okay. All right. There is a sign-up sheet going around. If you could just, can you hear me now? How's that? One, two, three. How's that? Is that better? All right. I'd first like to thank everybody for coming to our public EMS forum tonight. There are handouts around, so please grab one. There's some right over here. And that will also be, the information that's in those handouts will also be covered by this, okay, by this gentleman back here momentarily. We're gonna have, we'll have a presentation, a question and answer session at the end, and we're hoping to get everybody out of here sometime between eight and 8:30, depending on how long it goes. And as I was saying earlier, there's a sign-up sheet going around. It's not so that you can speak, it's just a sign-up sheet for attendance. And please. And I'm gonna turn it over to Matt Russo over here now.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I'm sure folks have read in the papers, seen some of the select minutes meetings, have an idea of what's going on. We wanted to take a few moments tonight to walk through some of the work that's gone on in building a paramedic service to be shared between Deerfield, Sunderland, and Tonight's agenda, basically we're gonna take a look at what the current system is, what are we doing now? We'll, again, cover the current service, look at, what are the goals of the new service? Where are we looking to go? What is a paramedic level of service? What does that offer to the residents? What does that paramedic service look like? There've been a lot of, a lot of stories circulating, rumors circulating. We kinda wanna give you an idea of what our vision is as the service. The roadmap, how did we get here? What brought this on? And then where do we go from here? Once we have our town meeting votes, what's next? When can I expect an ambulance? Kinda give you an idea of where we are now, as far as response times, if you should pick up the phone and call 911. How long should it take you to get an ambulance? One of the more important questions that we've been asked over and over again, what's it gonna cost? And what's the return on my investment? And then we'll take questions. Currently, the towns are provided with either a basic or an intermediate level of service. Deerfield and Waitley are at the intermediate level. Sunderland is at the basic level. Even though Deerfield and Waitley are currently licensed to provide service at the intermediate level, you only get that intermediate level of service when there is an intermediate EMT on the crew who responds to your home. We currently have no dedicated 24/7 staffing, so you call and we're hopeful that their EMT is available to respond. If not, there are backups that we go to in order to get that ambulance to you. One of the biggest challenges we've got are inconsistent response times. We've had a question before, why is it when my neighbor called two weeks ago, the ambulance showed up in five minutes, and when I called three weeks later, it took 18 minutes to get the ambulance here? We'll walk you through some of those scenarios and try to help explain some of that. We don't have any dedicated paramedic coverage. Does it mean we don't have any paramedic coverage? No. We rely on other services outside of the three towns to provide the paramedic level of coverage. Currently, paramedic coverage comes from Bay State Health Ambulance in Greenfield, Northampton Fire, it could come from Amherst Fire, or it could come from Pioneer Valley Ambulance at this point. We also have no ready reserve ambulance availability, which means each town only has one ambulance, there's no backup ambulance in any of the towns currently. What's wrong with local EMS? What are the challenges? What are the problems? Number one thing is the critical lack of manpower, women power, people power, EMS power in all the towns. What's led to this? There are a number of issues. If we look at how family life has evolved in the past 20, 30 years since these services started, 40 years since they started, there's been a dramatic shift in family life. More of the people who live in our communities work outside of town. People have been asked to volunteer in more organizations today than they ever have before. Look back 20 years ago. Does anybody remember a cancer walk 20 years ago? Does anybody remember a Walk for Alzheimer's? A Walk for MS? These are all the other activities that are looking for people to dedicate their time. The benefit to those activities, you can put on a calendar, you can schedule those times. You feel really good when you do something like that. Helping somebody out in EMS, yeah, it's a high. You'll feel really good after it, but are you willing to, at the drop of a dime, or in the middle of your dinner, or in the middle of the afternoon when you're out working in your garden, drop everything you're doing, quickly clean up, head and get on an ambulance to be gone for two hours to help out your neighbor? It's not convenient, it's not scheduled. It's kinda like snow in the wintertime. Except with the snow, the forecasters will tell you what might be coming, and they're probably wrong. We don't get any clue as to what's coming or when it's coming. On-call EMT availability has eroded. We don't have that like we used to years ago. For many people in Deerfield, Yankee Candle was a great partner of ours. I believe they had about 43 security folks who were EMTs. And when it was privately owned by Mike Kittredge, Mike would let those folks go and jump on an ambulance and help us out. We don't have that anymore. Local businesses have gone corporate. And the other piece, and we can't blame any of the businesses, we're thankful to the help that we've had. Corporate America today, for those of you who work in the private sector, do more, do it with less, do it more efficiently, make more money. People don't have the time. Training requirements. As with anything, training requirements today are more stringent than what they've been in the past. The local instructors who used to be able to lead those classes now have to be certified, they have to be affiliated with a training institution. It's, the other piece that has changed as training requirement has been the advent of these things. Smartphones. Go to a call today as an EMT, do something wrong, chances are it's gonna be picked up on videotape. You wind up in court. So what does that mean? It means we train more. Are we better today than we were years ago? Yes, we're better at collecting data, computers have helped that. We enter about 140-some different points of data for every call that we do, so the state can compile it and look for areas where we can improve and deliver better service. All that information has led to a better service in the end, but it's led to more training. It's led to more classroom time. So for the volunteer years ago who stepped up and took that 110-hour class and had to do a 28-hour refresher and maybe an eight- or 10-hour CPR class every other year, those requirements continue to increase. 20 to 80 percent of our calls during non-staffed periods require re-toning of the local ambulance service or mutual aid from other ambulance services outside of the area. What does that mean? In Deerfield, we staff EMTs from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. In Sunderland, Jim is staffed 7:03?
Eight to four.
Eight to four. Outside of those times, and even with some of those times, we only schedule one person on in each town. In order to transport somebody to the hospital, we need two EMTs. There have been times a single EMT has responded and started care while we wait for mutual aid because we can't get a second EMT to show up. There have been times when Sunderland's been called and Deerfield EMT's gone over to help, or Deerfield's gone out and Sunderland's come over to help us. We've worked together when we can, but it's not enough. 20 percent of all EMS requests are transported by mutual aid ambulances due to lack of personnel. Again, one EMT may have gone out, the police may have shown up on the doorstep, we can't get that second person to complete the crew. So I can tell you in Deerfield, one out of every five calls, we need a mutual aid ambulance to help us out. Not comforting when you're the person laying on the stretcher, waiting to get transported, and we need to wait till we have a second EMT onboard in order to make that transport. Too high a percentage of patients may wait 30 minutes or longer, we'll get into some of the wait times as we go further. As towns, when we're intercepted by those paramedic services, every time a paramedic service gets onboard our ambulance, we need to pay that paramedic service a fee. Most cases, they get paid when we get paid. Regardless, there's still money that has to be paid out. We've got a total of that for the three towns that we'll review. Our goal for this process is a shared paramedic level service to provide 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week coverage. What'll it offer the community? An enhanced level of care, faster response times, a primary ambulance that'll be staffed ready to go, an on-call ready reserve ambulance. So that backup ambulance will be staffed by on-call personnel, and again, we'll get into that as we go through this. And higher quality of life for patients. When emergencies happen, minutes count. Brain death can occur in four minutes. Stop breathing today, on the floor, lay down, four minutes brain death occurs. Not looking to scare anybody, just wanna tell you the facts. Stroke-like symptoms, chest pain, the quicker we can get you to the hospital, the quicker you can be treated, the better the chances are that you're gonna make it home in a reasonable amount of time. One of the concerns has been what happens to our current EMTs. Current EMTs will still have priority to work within the service. There'll be opportunities for those on-call shifts, there'll also be opportunities within the full-time service for current EMTs to apply and to continue to work within the communities. Some of our greatest resource are those EMTs out there today because they know the people in the community. I'll pick on one of mine, Kathy Belanger. For those of you who know Kathy, she gets on the ambulance, she goes to a call, she gets to a house. She knows a lot of people. One of our benefits is Kathy knows their baseline, she knows what they're like normally. So if somebody's a little off, having a rough day, Kathy's real good at picking that up. We can't get that from somebody who doesn't know who those people are. So those, those are some of the benefits that we can look forward to with our own What is a paramedic level of service? What do they offer me today that I don't get from our basic level or intermediate level? Ability to offer a differential diagnosis. What does that mean? I'm having chest pain. As a basic, we put oxygen on you, we'll monitor vitals, we're gonna get you into stretcher, we're gonna get you going to the hospital. Paramedic, when they come in, they'll hook you up to a monitor, they're gonna see what that monitor reads, they're gonna do some more in-depth diagnosis based on their training to try to figure out what might be going on. Once they figure out what might be going on, then the decision's made, are we gonna go to Franklin? We're gonna go to Cooley-Dick? Or do we have something where we need to go to a cath lab in Bay State where there might be a blockage? And this cath lab in Bay State, basically, in simple terms, is rotor-ruder. They're gonna get you in, they'll clear up the blockage. Hopefully, there won't be much damage to the heart muscle, or we can get you back to the active life that you've enjoyed before. Advanced intervention techniques. Again, another big word, IVs, pharmaceuticals, the ability to provide more advanced life-saving care. Be it chest decompression if you've got a collapsed lung, be it intubation, there are a number of skills that paramedics can provide because they've had the additional levels of training. A basic EMT goes to school for about 120 hours, spends another 10 hours in the field. Intermediate EMTs, about 200 hours of training, another 150 hours in the hospital and the field. Paramedics, it's the equivalent of getting associate's degree. Two years, between classroom training, skill sessions, work in the hospitals, and then work on the ambulances. They also bring the availability of emergency room techniques into the field. They have those tools, they have the pharmaceuticals, they have the knowledge. I like to say they're equipped with the tools and they know how to use them. At the end of the day, the quicker we can intervene, the better the chances for a more positive outcome for the patients involved. What does a partnership service look like? How's this thing gonna work? You know, what's the staffing? How's it gonna go? It's gonna be managed by a full-time ambulance director who will report to a board of oversight. The board of oversight will be comprised of two voting members from each community. One will be a select board appointee, maybe a select board member or somebody that they designate. And to start, it's gonna be the current EMS director. If the EMS directors aren't available to do it, it'll defer back to the select board to appoint somebody. The hope is, somebody with some type of medical knowledge, and then somebody with some management or a select board knowledge. Deerfield has agreed to be the fiscal agent for this. What does that mean? As a fiscal agent, Deerfield will keep the books of the service. They'll manage the accounts, they'll, they'll bring in the collections, they'll provide monthly financial statements, a P&amp;L, if you will, of where the service is and what's going on. As that fiscal agent, there'll be an appointee from the fiscal point to serve on that board of oversight. The thought behind this is to have a financial person who will serve on the board to advise the board where we are financially, as we build budgets, be able to give input on the budgets, kinda help guide the service to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible. That person, at this point, will be a non-voting member. They're there to advise the board, they're not there to participate in any of the voting that goes on. Again, current qualified staff will have priority in filling open positions. Primary ambulance being staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to run from the South Deerfield Fire District with one paramedic and a basic or an intermediate. State law allows us to run that ambulance with a paramedic and a basic, at a minimum. The advantage to having the intermediate, the intermediate can help intubate, they can do IVs, they can do some more advanced skills. So it gives that paramedic some assistance when they first arrive in being able to help stabilize that patient and get care started. The ready reserve ambulance to be staffed by the on-call personnel. In many cases, those will be our EMTs today that are still looking to be active, may not be able to commit to the full-time shifts. What does an on-call shift look like? You agree to sign up tonight to work from 3:00 to 11:00. You'll be at home, you'll be compensated for being at home, but you need to be available to respond. If at 4:37, the pager goes off because the first ambulance is going out to take care of a patient, you're then gonna get in your car, you're gonna go to Sunderland where the backup ambulance is gonna be, and you're gonna stand by with that ambulance. If a second call comes in before that first ambulance comes back into town and is ready to go, you'll respond to that second call. If nobody, if no second call comes in, when that ambulance is back in station and back in service, you'll be released to go back home. So the idea behind it is, you know, even though we're only gonna fully staff one ambulance 24 hours a day, seven days a week, we've got a backup ambulance that will take the second call that may come in, and we've got a dedicated crew ready to respond to that. Some of the benefits of a shared paramedic level service? Enhanced patient care. Paramedics can bring a higher level of care to you in your home, you know, students who may have a need on a school field, wherever the incident may occur where we need to respond. When we look at three levels of care, basic, intermediate, and advanced, we look at a basic level of care, kind of as a bronze medal. The intermediate becomes a silver medal, the paramedic level becomes a gold medal. Not to say that the bronze medal isn't good. Any athlete who earns a bronze medal busted their butt in the Olympics to get there. Same thing with our basic EMTs. For years, they've provided a great service to us. A lot of them have dedicated quite a few hours, they can tell you their own personal stories about missing meals, missing family events, different things that have gone on, no more than our volunteer firefighters do today. But at the end of the day, the number of calls and the duration of the calls is overwhelming what volunteers can provide. The intermediate level, again, provides some more skills above that basic level to help a few more advanced techniques. At the end of the day, if, again, chest pain, you have an emergency, the person you wanna knock on the door is a paramedic, the other person's got all the skills, who can show up and do as much as they possibly can for you to stabilize you and we can get you to the hospital. We're looking to significantly reduce our reliance on mutual aid. As I mentioned before, there are times when that one EMT goes out the door, begins care, and we wait. We wait for a second EMT. In Franklin County, Bay State Health Ambulance, who services a number of other towns, have become our primary mutual aid, when they come down to provide a driver to us, or provide a second EMT so we can get somebody to the hospital, we've taken a truck out of service or an ambulance out of service, it could be helping somebody else. We've basically stripped the paramedic crew because we need a driver. Doesn't make a lot of sense, but that's what the rules are, and unfortunately, to have a license to operate, you need to play by the rules. Having our own paramedics, two benefits. Number one, we won't do that. Number two, by having two people fully staffed, we'll be able to respond to the ambulance, pick up the patient, get going to the hospital. The bigger thing is that paramedic will be able to start that level of care immediately. We won't have to wait 10, 12, 15, 18 minutes for a paramedic intercept to show up. They're gonna get on scene, they're gonna assess the patient and determine the best course of action. Again, do we go to Franklin? Do we go to Cooley? Or do we head down to Bay State? Because that's where the trauma teams are, that's where they do more of the advanced techniques, this patient needs that. As opposed, in some cases, we've taken patients up to Bay State, wheeled them into the emergency room, the doctor will get in after they're registered with the nurse, after we've given information, after, you know, the nurse has been in and checked the blood pressure and vitals and done some of the basics. Doctor comes over, looks at the patient, orders a couple tests, next thing you know, they're on the phone a half hour later, we need an ambulance to transport this patient because they need to go down to Bay State. So we're looking to avoid all that, get you to where you need to be as quickly as possible so that you can get the care that you deserve and the care that you need. Guaranteed first call response for the participating communities. When a call comes in today, it's a crapshoot. I'll be quite honest, we don't know. We don't know who's available, we don't know who's gonna respond, we don't know where they're gonna respond from, we don't know how quickly it would get to you. In the town of Deerfield, we're fortunate our police respond, and they hold hands, they reassure, they've got a D-Fib machine that they're not afraid to use, which is a good thing for us, but they'll begin that care. They'll also give us radio updates and let us know. Here's what I've got, here's what's going on, we need to move this along, you're gonna need some extra help, we may need to call the fire department for extrication, they're in a small farmhouse on the second floor, the stairway's tight. They give us all that information to help us along. We expect that to continue. The difference is that ambulance is gonna roll right out the door quicker, so we're not leaving our police stranded on the front door 15, 18, 20 minutes waiting for an ambulance to show up, or longer in some cases. In, the ready reserve ambulance as well, will be there. Again, as that first ambulance goes out, people respond, they're gonna staff that ambulance, and they'll be ready to go. If a first call was to come in right now at 7:25 and a second call comes in at 7:27, yes, there's gonna be a little bit of a delay because that second crew's gonna need to get in and staff that second ambulance. The benefit is, instead of that second call coming in 27:27 and waiting, who might be coming, who's gonna come, is it gonna get staffed at all? We'll already have a schedule, we'll know there are two people who are dedicated to respond and get that ambulance on the road for us. Elimination of duplicated efforts among the communities. Currently, all three communities operate their own ambulance. By doing this, we're gonna take three communities and roll it into one ambulance. Hopefully, eliminate some of the redundancy that happens. Some of it may be in the back office. All three towns have to do billing, all three towns have to do collections, all three towns have to do budget tracking, payroll, apply for licenses, all the things that go with that. Hopefully, we'll eliminate some of that and create some efficiency. One of the other pieces is the reduced intercept cost. I'd spoken earlier about the cost of paramedics every time they come onboard to help one of our patients. Currently, in fiscal year '13, the three towns combined paid $53,000 to other services to provide those paramedic, paramedic services for us. So we're looking at that as being a savings to help offset some of the costs of this Where do we start? How do we get here? Prior to December 2011, I know I had spoken with Bob quite a bit in Sunderland about we're getting older, it's less EMTs, we're missing more calls, we need to do something. What can we do? I voiced those concerns with our town administrator at the time, Bernie Kubik, a number of times. Made my select board aware of it. Bernie comes to me one day and says, hey, we've got an opportunity to apply for some grant money that we could look at possibly doing a regional ambulance service. Would you be interested? Oh, Bob, you interested? Yeah, let's take a look, let's see what we can do. Contacted Waitley, Waitley was interested. Paperwork was filed, we wound up receiving the grant money to do it. The Franklin County Council of Governments, or the COG, was able to secure the grant money for us and then hired Bruce Baxter and Associates to come down and study the feasibility of a combined service. Bruce Baxter runs EMS in New Britain, Connecticut. Granted, a larger city, he's been at it quite a while. His consulting business has consulted on a number of other services, some that covered a much larger area than ours, some that covered a smaller area than ours. Each case a little different, as I think you would probably find if you looked at EMS services and fire services in the area, each one's probably a little bit different. And he was a person who could look at this objectively from the outside, gathered quite a bit of data, and was able then to come up and formulate some options for us and help guide us to where we needed to be. In May of 2012, after a number of meetings that we were involved in, Bruce was able to publish his first report. The report was based on the data that had been collected, our meetings, and had some suggestions about do we wanna move forward with this? Here are some things we need to answer, here are some things we need to discuss, where do we go from here? That report was presented to the combined select boards, and the feeling at that meeting was, okay, let's continue this and continue to push forward. The group continued to meet and work. In November of 2012, Bruce issued his second report, basically giving you an outline of what we were recommending and what we thought the service needed to look like to be able to cover the towns. More importantly, Bruce also provided a baseline budget of what he thought it was gonna cost. In working with our administrators and our town clerks and finance folks, we're able to take Bruce's budget and kinda work that down into real-life numbers of what it meant for our three communities. Bruce's budget, when it was built initially, tried to cover every single cost. At the end of the day, he would rather be conservative and maybe be a little over in the budget than come back and have to say, you know, yeah, I prepared the budget best I could, but we fell short a couple hundred thousand dollars. We all know what that's like. So in taking those numbers and working those numbers through, we were able to kinda pare them down some butt into what we felt were more realistic numbers for our towns. From November until now, that working group has been working to, again, refine that budget, build staffing models, and work together to figure out, how do we make this thing work? In looking at it, we looked at a number of different organizational setups for it and decided on this inter-town or inter-municipal agreement is the best way to kinda, kinda manage it with the board of oversight. Where do we go next? There'll be town meetings held in the three towns this month. Once those meetings happen, if all three towns should approve this, the next step would be to develop that board of oversight, begin the work of building the service, hire the director, and begin figuring out policies and procedures and getting this thing up off the ground. Our initial goal was to try to get it up and running by January 1, 2014. Again, I think that'll be a little bit of a flexible target, depending on how quickly we can get the board of oversight and get some of the work done that needs to happen. There's quite a bit that still needs to happen in order to get this thing up and running. Beyond January 2014, once the service does get up and running, it'll be a matter of monitoring the service, collecting and analyzing data, making sure that we're making our calls, making sure that we're making the times that we've agreed to, looking for any potential opportunities to improve the opportunities to improve the service, implementing course corrections, and then continue our efforts to find a permanent home for the service. As we get going, and again, we've got some maps to show you, response times in the different areas of the towns. You'll notice I mentioned that two ambulances will be in two different places. One will be in South Deerfield, the other one will be housed in Sunderland. Part of that is because we weren't able to, there's not enough space available for us to operate both ambulances out of the South Deerfield Fire District. They've been gracious enough to let us stay, we're thankful for that, it provides the best geographic location for response. But as they continue to grow, as their equipment continues to grow, they're going to need their space back, and we need to find ourselves a permanent home. So they continue work and looking at that. Some local response times, the numbers are there in black and white. Just to explain, an average response time, if we took all the responses that were made and averaged them, the first column will give you what the average is. The 90% fractile response times, basically what that means is if you took all your times and you went to 90%, so arguments say Deerfield, we have 400 calls, so if I went to call number 360, which would be the 90th percent, call number 360 would take us 17 minutes to get to. Beyond that, it gets longer. Why does it take longer? Depends. We may have to go all the way up near Selectman Ness's house on a wintry night where the roads are icy. It may be one of those cases where one of our EMTs has responded and started care, the second EMT hasn't shown up, and we've toned our mutual aid partners, and they're struggling to get a crew available, BHA may not be available, we may be waiting for North Hampton, a number of different reasons. Distance from the station, for Deerfield, 99% of our calls occur within five miles of the South Deerfield Fire Station. Sunderland, within five, 94% of that calls within five miles of the station, and in Waitley, 93% of the calls occur within five miles of the station. These are the numbers that Bruce provided to us based on the data he was able to ascertain from Shelburne Control and from the individual towns. Looking at total number of EMS responses, this is based on last year's numbers. Deerfield, 614, Sunderland, 250, Waitley, 143. These are number of times the ambulance was called to respond to a scene. Doesn't mean we transported, doesn't mean we were able to send an ambulance, and doesn't mean we were able to staff that ambulance fully. These are just a number of requests for service, number of times a 911 call came in that said we need an ambulance. These are the number of transports. So as you can see, you know, Deerfield went from 614 to 397, Sunderland went from 250 to 159, Waitley dropped down to 53, and then mutual aid, other towns providing transport for our patients, 150 times. Number of reasons for this. There are times that we get called to a scene, and we get what's called a patient refusal. Police may get on scene, it's an auto accident head-on, as they're approaching the scene, they say, hey, start the ambulance, we need them here. Show up to find both people buckled in, airbags went off, they're walking around, they feel fine. We'll show up on scene, check the people out, get vitals, get some information, they're adults, I don't want to go to the hospital, I don't want to be treated, I'm fine, they'll sign off, we go home. There's also been times that we've requested to go by and stand by. Police have to make, execute a search warrant, there may be a call for domestic violence, whatever the need is, we get called. We've also had calls where somebody's choking, we'll get called, and we'd rather you call us quickly, let us get there, let us, you know, begin our transport, or begin our approach to your home, thank you, only to find out that whatever you're choking on has cleared, you're fine, you don't want to go. So a number of reasons why we may not actually transport. The big one, though, the mutual aid, it's a number of times somebody else had to do it for us. I can tell you, as I stand here tonight, I'm not proud of that. I'm not proud of the fact that one in five calls we can't transport on our own, but unfortunately, it's where we're at. This is why we're asking for help, we're asking to increase our staff. The geography we're looking at, almost 67 square miles, you know, big space, little space, you know, it doesn't seem too big unless you're in one of the further corners of the towns. Again, the primary ambulance out of the South Deerfield Station, the ready reserve will be out of Sunderland. From either location, the fully-staffed ambulance should be on scene within 15 minutes, and 85% or more of the response is dispatched. Why do we say 85% or more? Looking at the map, green is good, red is bad. So green starts at one minute response time, red becomes 17. As you can see, the closer you are to the station, the more green shaded area there is, the quicker we're able to respond. When you're out in the red shaded areas, living further from the center of towns, it's going to take us longer to get there. The benefit, though, is that 17 minutes, we don't have to wait an additional 10 or 12 minutes for somebody to respond from home, get into that ambulance and drive, which would make that 17 minutes, 27, 30 minutes. Prepare the same map for Sunderland, and the response of the ready reserve or the backup ambulance. Again, green being good, yellow and red being bad, but either way, the benefit becomes, you know, even the furthest response being 22 minutes, shaving that extra 10 or 12 minutes off, and hoping we get a crew to show up and respond to take that ambulance. What's the bottom line? What's it going to cost? Can we afford it? We are presenting first the six-month budget, and looking to start this in January, we've estimated here where our costs are, the projected revenue, as you'll see on this, looks low, it's like, wow, it's an awful lot of expense, not a whole lot of revenue. Part of the challenge we're going to have starting up is, unlike you going grocery shopping and having to pay for your groceries before you leave the store, unlike you going to the doctor and having to make your co-pay before you leave, we don't show up in an ambulance and say, before we start, I need a credit card or a check. We're going to swipe that first, this way we can bill you as soon as we're done. Not the way we work, not the way medicine works today, not in emergency medicine anyhow. So what happens is, after that call happens, we fill out a run report to give to the hospital, letting the hospital know what's been done, what did we find, what assessment did we make, what type of treatment did we provide, patient signs off, we transfer your care to the hospital. We get back to the station, over the course of a couple days, those get aggregated up, and they're sent off to a billing company. Billing company then has to process that, reads through it, figures out what services we provide, then they turn and bill your insurance company. If everything is perfect, insurance company pays us hopefully a couple weeks. If it's not perfect, I isn't dotted, T isn't crossed, there's a comma where a period should be, the wrong code number was entered, they kick the whole thing back. Now, billing service has to go through, try to figure out what the issue is, call the insurance company, work to get that resolved a longer period of time. Some insurance companies pay better than others. You may have heard about a government shutdown going on, government's one of the biggest insurers in the country, and we don't know how that's going to affect us. But by and large, we typically, in speaking with the folks who do the billing, they're telling us, within three months, you collect, I wanted to say it was 35 to 40%, four to five months, you get up to 60%. When you hit the six-month mark, you should collect about 85% of what you've billed out. That other 15%, if you're involved in an auto accident and you had to go to the hospital, chances are that bill's not going to get paid for a couple years until that auto accident is fully resolved, especially if there's litigation. Slip and fall at somebody's house, it's a claim against homeowner's insurance, litigation tied up longer, it takes longer to collect. In some cases, we don't collect anything. We may transport somebody who, you know, either dies in our ambulance, or dies on the way to the hospital, or dies at the hospital, and now it goes against their estate, maybe there isn't much in the estate, you can't get blood from a stone, we're not going to get paid anything on that. Our billing companies will work with us, identify those, they all come back to our town clerks, who will go through those reports and decide with the Board of Selectmen, what do we write off, what don't we write off? We make every effort to collect the fees for the services we provide. So as we start up with these three towns in this service, if it goes forward, day one, while we may be doing calls, we're not going to see money from day one until month number three, four, and five, or six, or beyond. So we've had to take that into account. As we get into the full year, and I've got a full year budget, I'll show you next, it accounts for the full allotment of what we expect to collect. Because by that point, we're six months in, and we should start to see a pipeline fill up, so to speak. The formula that was arrived at for this, the EQV plus population 50/50, is something that was batted around quite a bit. Looking at a number of formulas that are used between the towns and sharing services, and there are a number of formulas out there, we thought it best to try to stick with something that was already there, something that was going to be easy to calculate, and this is actually the formula that's currently used for the solid waste district, and it seemed to be one to fit. As we looked at the different formulas, some were higher for each town, some were lower, this one seemed to be a median across all three, and agreeable to all three Boards of Selectmen.
It's been in over 20 years.
So Carolyn just commented, it's been over 20 years it's been in use with the solid waste district. This is a budget for, fully annualized, so this is what, in theory, the budget would be as we go to town meeting in the spring, looking to fund this service for the following year. As you can see, the projected revenue has come up quite a bit. At the end of the day, please keep in mind, this is a service. This is a service, the same as your highway department provides you a service, same as your police department provides a service, and your fire department provides a service. The difference with this service is that, for the services that we provide to the individual, we get to collect money. The money we collect will not fully offset what it's going to cost to provide this service. Question I pose to you is, do our police officers get in order to write enough tickets to cover their budget? Do we send our fire inspectors out to deliver enough fire violations to cover their budget? It's a service. The end of the day, it's a service that's going to provide medical care for you in a time of emergency. If you've never had to call an ambulance, God bless, knock on wood, count your blessings, hopefully it never has to happen. For those of you who have called and have waited, minutes seem like hours. It can seem like forever. For anybody who's waited in the emergency room for those four or five hours for the doctor to come, seems like forever. The good part is, you're already in the emergency room, so if something happens, you can press the button, you can annoy the nurse to get somebody to come in and see you right away. Something happens at home, you've called out an ambulance, 20, 25 minutes to get there, it's you and your thoughts. Hopefully, a police officer or somebody has shown up to provide some initial assistance, but you're waiting for that higher level of care to show up. Questions? I know we've thrown a lot of information out, there were some sheets up front for people to pick up as you walked in, so you've got the information. Everything that's been reviewed tonight, as you go to your own town meetings, I'm sure there'll be other discussions that happen. We're here tonight to answer any questions that we can on the service. Yes?
Uh, just a quick question.
Sure.
Your primary ambulance thing is based in the South Deerfield.
Correct.
It's temporary.
Yes.
So if that goes to Sunderland, how does that increase response over on this side of the river for, let's say, public or local?
It'll increase response because the backup ambulance will then be staffed. So today, if you were to have an emergency call, tone goes out, now you've got to wait for responders to respond to the station.
Well, you have to do that in your river.
Right, but as soon as that first ambulance goes out, the tone's going out as that first ambulance is responding, so those responders for the second ambulance...
Can you repeat your question? I don't think you got what you're asking.
Yeah.
Repeat your question.
If your primary ambulance is all mapped out, so it's in the center of South Deerfield, it's great response time, then out, well, that's only temporary where it's going to be. So what if it's across the river of Sunderland, and your primary ambulance is out, we're a full ambulance, and we have three calls in a row?
Basically, the temporary housing of the ambulance service at South Deerfield Fire District is just a good geographical area. When the ambulance is moved to someplace, it's going to be in a equally good location. We'll be looking for a home for it that is still the best to serve all the communities in which it serves. We won't be moving it to far out because we've got a cheap location. It's going to be, geographically, we're going to put it in good position to serve all of its constituents.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Would you, I don't, why don't you add to that, that that's a three-year commitment?
Okay, it's a three-year commitment.
It'll be your three years.
And please, don't take my levity as being sarcastic or anything of that, it's just the way I try to break the ice a little bit, so I'm not being, sorry, I'm not being the smart alec, it's just a little bit of levity in there, so.
Yes, I understand how the budget breakdown worked out for the three towns, but what criteria was used for establishing two voting members for each town?
We've put in place that model with the senior center, and we've actually really seen a good interaction from all three towns when that worked, and we're trying to model that again. If it doesn't work, it will be changed, because basically, if we don't work together, it'll have to, but right now, we've got a dynamite group working with the senior center, we hope that everybody agrees with that philosophy, that vision, but we think that this is people who want us to provide a service, and are not going to have an issue with how many are the numbers, they're going to actually look at how to provide a good service. And if it gets tied up with it, we'll fix that.
FCAT and EDS.
Right. FCAT is the same way, the people that run the TV for us, the EDS service is the same way, it's an equal share, it's an equal partnership in the process. Again, people looking to provide a really good service. We have one guy down here first.
The makeup of three people that are part of the EMS service, that's 50% of the voting members, I mean, it would seem that they could almost get anything they want without the towns having any control. I mean, it seems very heavy on people that are part of the service.
I don't, the 50% of the service, the...
People from each town, and one of the people is an existing director from each of the towns, so you've got 50% of the voting members are part of the service.
A medical skill set is an incredibly important skills component for the makeup of the Board of Oversight, obviously. And having it balanced equally with three representatives from the respective Boards of Selectmen, who are responsible for the fiduciary, the fiduciary realities of the town, for other town services, understanding the need for balance, understanding the need for good governance, the six-member board plus the director is actually, in our opinion, quite a good balance in terms of effective...
So in reality, there are four people that are part of the service on the board.
Yes, there is.
So the towns are relinquishing any control from this, and it's being given to the entity...
The director is a non-voting member.
Wait a minute, let me clarify something. Right now, you have three ambulance services.
Yes, do you?
Right now, we have three ambulance services.
Is it better now?
Yes.
Okay. We have three ambulance services which have 100% governance of what they do, and they do a good job for us. We're asking for this system to take those services which now work very well, minus the volunteer and the manpower that we don't have, and help put a, the role for the Board of Selectmen is to make sure that we keep a balance as to what's going to go to the budget at the end of the year. They're still going to have to get this paid for, and if it's not agreed upon, if it's going off of cue, you, the people, are going to make sure that you bring us back online. But I think the board of selectmen's and those people who have been providing the services for going on forty years are the best people to make this thing work.
In your municipal agreement that's been drafted, actually, the board of oversight is a direct, is an appointment of each of the three towns' boards of selectmen in a rotation. There's no guarantee that will be EMT, board of selectmen, good to you. It's important to bear that in mind. As each of those terms go, three years, then a two-year, then it's, the body, the board of oversight, is a body that will have some measure of continuity, but has a replacement stake. It's not going to be weighted in any one way. It's all about appointing of the town boards.
Tom had a question there that I-
No, I just want to bring up, I guess, my top heart, I'm from, mine is from Deerfield. I've served on the school committees and other town committees over the years. And there has been, had been a problem when Frontier was set up, and each town had each voting members. And that's a sticky point for years until, because Deerfield ended up paying fifty percent of the cost, but it didn't have fifty percent of the votes. And it did get to be changed a few years ago, so Deerfield does have an extra vote. I guess that's my question, is why if Deerfield pays fifty-one percent of the cost, we don't have any more than one-third of votes?
Well, from-
Can you read the question mark, because it's hard to hear.
The question was, that basically, when Frontier was established, there was a one, it was an even membership across the three, four towns. And basically, they fought to get one man, one vote into that body. I understand that, and I've lived through that argument most of my life, from both being in the school and being in the chair for, or sitting as a board of selectmen for a number of years. But the reality is, the big difference is that the fiduciary responsibility is on that board. And it's also the body of people who want to make it work. As with the EDS and as with the senior center, as it is with the solid waste management group, all of those groups have a group of people who want to see a system, a service, work. And basically, they're, they're there to have that happen. And the schools have created an at-odds between education and government. And that isn't, it's something that, because it's now put forward by legislation, we don't have control over who does what, what the formula does. It has gotten off cue and actually looks at us and them situation. The boards of selectmen, the finance committee, and all those people who have looked to having communications at the school board to actually see if we can rectify that problem and have people solely working for the betterment of the service, instead of setting it at odds as to counting heads or counting beans. It's worked very well, and I can't emphasize enough that basically, the boards of selectmen are committed to making it work and making it work correctly. So there will be checks and imbalances. I don't see this as being one of the issues that will have to happen, but if people are unhappy, we will have to address it.
You know, Tom, that was, that was actually a very good question. Because your question was directly opposite of the gentleman's question before, where he thought that the, the medical people were going to have a controlling interest versus the town. So I actually think it's a very, that's part of the things that we discussed, was how do we make it so that we actually have conversations, instead of just someone putting down a budget in front of us and it's rubber stamp? How do we have that conversation to ensure that that budget that we're looking at is something that the three towns together can afford, not, not one town on its own? So it's a tough balancing act, and you're right. When you have, you know, fifty-one percent of payment, or you have fifty percent of the board by their trade, how do you try to even that out? So that, they're both very good questions.
Should this be voted in and approved? Would then, all of the ambulances, the heart monitors, the rent, all the capital stuff, be just merged together as part of this, whatever you call it?
Bobby, you want?
We're going to, the board of oversight and the director that's hired will look at the equipment list from all the towns of what's available and choose the equipment that will wind up going on those ambulances. For argument's sake, you know, we've talked about Deerfield's ambulance being primary, Sunderland's being secondary just due to the age of both units. You know, chances are, mostly, equipment will come with that. There may be an opportunity to look at, wait in these ambulances for some newer equipment that may be on there.
But there are provisions in the intermunicipal agreement that if one town decides to leave the group, that the equipment, there's provisions on the, the equipment going back to those towns that it came from also.
Mine wasn't so much of a concern about the actual money. It's more that, to be a unique group, really working together to get rid of this concept of three towns, you've got to own your capital, everybody's got to pay into the preventative maintenance, to the replacement, to the rent, to the new items that come along that we need, you know, so.
Absolutely, there is a buy-in.
Breakdown of this, because right now, a lot of the division is about, well, what do we pay, and what do they pay? And really, if we all want to work together and have a good service, a lot better than what we have, we just have to forego something, and that's one thing that needs to be done, is to break it down.
I'd like to bring up the issue again about the fiscal agent and the, being a non-voting member. And also the fact that I mentioned at the Sunderland Board of Selectmen meeting and at the Deerfield Board of Selectmen meeting, good basic structure means that you have an odd number of people on the board. And the reason for that is so that you don't have an even tie. And the bottom line is that we looked at Frontier, they were established in fifty-four, based upon a study committee. And this study committee, in order to rectify this thing, it finally took directions from the state, a state mandate that you will fix this thing, and it took over fifty years to fix it. Why don't we fix it upfront? Why do we have to relearn that same lesson? There are a lot of people out there that are not happy with the provision of paying fifty-two percent and only having one-third of the vote.
I guess I would, I would counter with, the key word to this entire new business we're creating, which in essence is what this is, is that this is a partnership. This is a partnership between three towns who have a vested interest in seeing each other thrive. Speaking on behalf of Whately, I don't have just an interest in seeing the people in Whately have enhanced quality care in emergency situations. I have an interest in seeing all three towns' residents realize the best possible, possible care in emergency situations. When you have a voting structure the way we are trying to set it up, there is no other way than to constantly work to find common ground for the best interest of each resident of the three towns. By default, you've got to find that common ground. The luxury of having a four-to-three vote, I don't believe, best serves anyone in any of these towns. I think everyone in these towns is best served, and I think I speak for everybody who's been part of this process for the last two years. I think the best way to ensure that we are doing the best possible job and providing the best possible service for every resident in the three towns is to make sure we find common ground. And when you have the potential for a four-to-three vote, you don't have to find that common ground. You find good enough ground. And we want a partnership that works, that speaks to every need in every town.
I just kind of like to add on to that.
Can you still use the microphone or something?
I'd kind of like to add on to that. How many times has somebody here heard or has said themselves, oh, we'd like to have the government work like, more like a company, because that'd be more efficient? That's essentially what this is. We're trying to focus, like you've heard, on making something work and de-politicizing the process. And like Jonathan said, we're actually starting with, and this kind of ties back to your question about equipment. This is an entirely new venture, we're starting from scratch, and we'd like to take the lessons that we've learned from the past and also some of the baggage from the past, and just dump it and start from scratch with a new, efficient model. We're really trying to focus on serving the customers and the people who need ambulances, rather than getting hung up on older arguments and things like that.
Kevin in the back.
Hang on.
Hold on for a second.
I'd like to ask you just to speak.
I just want to add one thing. No, we just, we decided as select boards that this is supposed to be collaborative. This is a collaborative effort. This is not fifty percent, fifty-two percent pushing somebody else to the, you know, in the corner. We are working together to make sure everybody, everybody gets to the hospital in time.
Just to kind of go off of what Ralph was asking. Is it put into the budget, part of the capital, that replacements for the ambulances are going to be put in? And my next question is, is on the opt-out. Is there going to be any type of contract? We're going to just say, and I'm not picking anybody in particular, just to say, the three towns go together, and six months down the road, Sunderland says, I'm out. Is there any type of contract that's going to be done?
Yes.
There is?
It's an MOU, it's an agreement. But it goes through a period of time that you have to stay in place.
All right.
And then you can get out, and whatever equipment you brought in, which will give the service to remain, to re-get the equipment that's going to be taken out by the opt-out process.
Okay.
But it's a, it's a year.
It's very similar, Deerfield and Sunderland shared a building inspector. Deerfield chose to opt out of that, not Sunderland, by the way. Deerfield chose to opt out. And what happened, and part of provision was, was, was that Deerfield gave Sunderland the, I think, a six months, six months notice at that time. And in our, and actually, in our intermunicipal agreement, there's a one-year notice as of the first of the fiscal year, which we haven't decided what that date was, but it'll probably be July first. So there is a, there is a rolling calendar, and there's an outreach to the towns.
It guaranteed one year, plus whatever the fiscal is.
Well, I can tell you, I know there's a lot of talk on the street, and one of the things that people are really concerned about, I'm a Deerfield resident, is running the wheels off of Deerfield's ambulance. And then, two years down the road, everybody goes, wow, you know what, we're done with this. We don't want to do it, we're going to do our own thing. And then we just beat ours into the ground. And I just want to make sure, if, if we go ahead and go into something like this, then the monies will be there to help us recoup our ambulance. Again, I'm just, I'm being selfish because I'm a town resident, you know, that's basically where I'm coming from.
That very issue was discussed at one of the more recent meetings of, of the group that worked to build this proposal and to build the intermunicipal agreement. We talked about that in depth because of fairness to towns who are providing upfront capital, because we obviously are going to benefit from the ambulances that come in from Deerfield or the other ambulance from Sunderland and whatever Whately can provide. So no question that the new company is going to benefit from old companies being willing participants in the process. But we talked about absolutely having language directly speaking to worth of the, of the equipment, how to get the equipment back, all this type of thing. And obviously, you know, accounting practices, et cetera, will come into the values that are, that are placed upon all of this capital equipment. But it's definitely been addressed, and it's something we've talked about at length.
One, one quick second, because I came to mind that maybe everybody in here doesn't know everybody else in the process. But to just show you, I'd like you to just go through and give you who's sitting up here, in case you don't know them, from the other towns. And the other one is that the other people who interject from time to time are select board members who have been at almost all of these meetings to make sure this thing works and gets off the ground correctly. So I'm Mark Gilmore, in case you don't know me.
I'm Jonathan Edwards from Whately.
Tom, I'm Kevin from Sunderland.
Carolyn Des, Deerfield.
That's Carolyn Des from Deerfield.
I'm David Pierce from Sunderland.
Joyce Palmer Fortune just raised her hand back here. From Whately, yep. Scott Bur, Scott Burzron from Sunderland. Paul Newland from Whately. Town administrators, Lynn Sibley. Margaret Nardowitz. Wendy, Wendy Foxman.
To, to, just give you a little bit, these people have been at almost all the meetings, along with fire chiefs, police chiefs, people who would guide us in these type of decisions. And we would be remiss if we'd said this was something we had the steering wheel for. So understand, if these people stand up and talk, they've been part of this, and they basically are interested in seeing a successful process. Just everybody, I'd like some to share, so other people get a chance, but we'll get back to you. There's nobody not going to-
Fred?
So everybody out in TV land will get a chance to hear you talk too.
And you say who you are, Fred.
I'm Fred Erlosky from Whately. Got a kind of a three-part question. The third question depends on your answers to the first two. Your pie chart with EMS service for Deerfield and Sunderland, how many of them, or does that include mutual aid to other communities?
Yes, it does.
And what percent of them were mutual aid to other communities?
They're not in there.
I didn't break it out that way, unfortunately. I can tell you, I believe Deerfield, we had about a hundred and twenty-two requests, mutual aid, to go either to Sunderland, Whately, or Greenfield, typically our mutual aid communities, or Conwy.
So of the six hundred, what, fourteen, a hundred and twenty, where, how many from Sunderland?
Whately had seventy-one.
Seventy-one. Okay, that gets my, what is Sunderland's?
I think it was about fifty-three.
Fifty-three, he said.
My concern, I guess, is, kind, to the level of service, I mean, if, if the two towns where the ambulances are, where the two ambulances are on mutual aid calls, then that comes down, outside the area, the three-town area, that means the three towns, or even Whately's, got to wait for a mutual aid ambulance to come, right? Because that's happening, what, twenty, thirty percent of the time, you're not home, you're out on mutual, mutual aid.
That's why we have the ready reserve ambulance that would be standing up.
But both, both could be out at the same time.
I think we're only talking about five percent, five to six percent of that occurring. That was something they did look into.
We, we looked at numbers based on last year. I think there were thirty-two times in the year where two ambulances were out at the same time. Now, just one thing, because we thought about the same thing. We don't want our ambulances out taking care of other people, we, we, our community not available. Couple of things that have developed recently to help that. Turner's Falls, which relies on Bay State Health Ambulance to provide their primary service, one of the towns that we go to in mutual aid or have been going to frequently, has recently started their own ambulance service. So they're backing themselves up, so if BHA isn't ready to come over, they can have their own ambulance now respond. So let's take some of that off. The next big person requesting mutual aid is Greenfield. And Greenfield, when BHA can't cover them, relying on Deerfield, Shelburne, cold rain, extreme cases, maybe in Northfield to come down to help. Greenfield Fire Department is looking currently at that situation and trying to work to provide a service that would help to offset that. As I stand before you tonight, I can't tell you what way it's going to go or how it's going to go. They realize it's an issue, in speaking with the fire chief in Greenfield, a week ago, Friday, five times during the course of the day, they had a mutual aid ambulance into their town. So they realize there's a problem, and they're working to try to correct that.
Right.
So our hope is, they'll wind up getting an ambulance and help to provide mutual aid for their own community as well. And Fred, I would add to that, and I don't know all the specifics and how this would play out, and we would need to work with the new director and the, the, the three towns to figure out how it works. But I'm hoping that a volunteer service, above and beyond what we've discussed here, still exists at some level, in Whately, if not the other two towns as well. If that exists, and the Whately ambulance continues to operate, that will be a third ambulance that volunteers, who are very capable and have done a great job over the years, could still fulfill a certain number of the non-perimatic level calls that were called on. So that's another component that will continue to add service to the towns beyond what you saw here tonight.
Okay, then, I guess, the final question. Could you explain the process? Okay, then I guess the final question, could you explain the process? Because I don't think I fully understand it, because I have never been called a 911 call yet. When 911 call comes in, do you explain, is it going to, it's going to go to, I'll ask you to do this, explain how it goes to Deerfield. I guess if they don't respond, it goes to Sunderland? If they don't respond, it goes to mutual aid or Whately? What is the time period between all these steps versus calling, if it happened in Whately, Whately going out direct?
When you call in for a mutual aid call today. Yes.
When you call 911 today, they typically ask you where you are unless you're at home, calling from a home phone, it flashes on the screen, they'll confirm your address. Based on what you're telling them, if you're telling them, "I fell and I've, I've, I've got a cut on my hand," they will then tone the town of Deerfield. Initial tone will go out. Or if you're in Whately, I apologize, you're in Whately, they'll tone the town of Whately. They're going to wait three minutes. No one's come on the air, they're going to tone Whately again. They'll wait another three minutes. If Whately still doesn't have somebody on the air, another two minutes, which would be the third tone, and at that point, mutual aid is going to get toned.
Do that same scenario with your regional service.
Regional service, you're going to call 911, they're going to tone out the regional service, the two people on shift in Deerfield are going to get in the ambulance and they're going to start driving to you.
If they're not there, John?
If they're not there, hopefully, the backup crew is already in the station, the tone will go out and then the backup crew is going to come on the air and say, "We're responding." If the backup crew is also out on the call, because God forbid it was, you know, we've got something over at Yankee Candle and maybe there's something at the high school, the two ambulances are tied up, they're going to know our two ambulances are currently tied up. They'll put a tone out for the EMTs in the system to respond, but they're also going to then look to send either BHA your way, or Northampton Fire, or Pioneer Valley.
Conway.
Conway. We have, we all have running cards or running orders that says, "Our ambulance gets toned first, if not, this one is second, if not, this one is third, if not, this one is fourth, if not, this one is fifth."
There's still three minutes between the Deerfield and Sunderland ambulance and the regional aid.
Not our service.
No. Once with that regionalized service, the dispatcher's going to know both ambulances are already out. They'll tone EMTs to respond, to stand by and begin care, but they're not going to tone one of the ambulances and wait. They're immediately going to get on the radio and ask, "BHA, do you have a unit available to respond to the town of Whately?" BHA is going to respond to them either yes or no. And if the answer is no, okay, thank you very much, they're going to call, maybe it's Conway, and tone out Conway, and that'll go through the toning process. It depends on what the director and board of oversight set up. And if it's not Conway, it may be calling to Northampton Fire, or calling to Pioneer or Amherst. At the end of the day, with a regionalized service, in, and you know what, we won't solve every single ambulance call, because there are going to be times when both trucks are going to be busy. We have an auto accident, we have four people involved, both ambulances are going to be busy. No more than if we were having a fire at 2:00 in the afternoon at the high school and you needed to evacuate people off the third floor. We don't have enough firefighters or equipment in the three towns. We're going to be calling mutual aid. So that's what we're going to have to do. You know, this service should take care of 90% to 95% of whatever comes its way. But there's still going to be that percentage that will overtax the system. The only way to guard against that would be to own a fleet of ambulances, which we're not asking for, because we don't think it's prudent and we can't afford it. We would love to be able to have a garage, it's full of ambulances, it'll handle anything. We don't have that. If you look at communities on Long Island and New York, we looked at one that somebody brought up at a meeting, I mean, six ambulances and a boat and all kinds of rescue equipment and, great. But you're also looking at 25,000 people packed in a 10-mile square area. We don't have that. I hope I answered your question?
Yes.
So, I'm coming at it from a, sort of a different perspective. As this has been going on, I've just sort of been trusting the people who are involved in the committees to do the best work. And so what you put forward, I tend to trust, and you've really put a lot of effort into it. And so I show up tonight and you've proven it to me, you've put a lot of thought and care into it. I know EMTs and you guys, they're the ones I should trust the most. So, thank you for all your work, number one. Number two, my perspective is, I'm more connected with the schools. Julie Kavalko, I live in Deerfield, and I still work with a lot of kids. And I know, you know, people from Sunderland, because my kids went to school with them from Frontier, Whately, Deerfield. And Deerfield is not an island. We, to get to the mall, we have to go to Sunderland, to get to Northampton, we have to go to Whately. And I really like the idea that all services would be the same amongst all three towns. When I think of how much time I spent in Sunderland, and it's only been basic care, you know, I would really like to see all the service be equal across the three, because the people in Deerfield, if for us to exit our town, we rely on the safety services in those two towns, Whately and Sunderland. Because not every call is just for a Sunderland resident in Sunderland, and not every call is just for a Whately resident in Whately. So I think that's a consideration that Deerfield should consider when it comes to considering this. And thank you again for your work.
One thing I'd like to make clear, the three ambulance services have provided a keystone service. And the reason we're here is because the manpower's not there to support them. The Sunderland, whether they're, whether we're a basic, whether we're a param, intermediate or a basic crew, it's what we can support with the manpower that we can get educated to do the job, and support them in a manner which they're used to be supported. They've done a dynamite job across the board, and this is not picking apart any function of that, because they've done the best they can do with the pieces of the puzzle that they've had in front of them. So make sure you understand, this is across the board, looking at trying to increase the manpower to provide us with a very good service in all three towns.
I would add to that, it's important to, to realize first and foremost that we are doing this to enhance the quality of life for people who are in need of emergency services. The theme, one of the themes tonight has been, the times are changing. One of the things that's changing, and I can't articulate this as well as the, the paramedic professionals, the EMT professionals, but in Deerfield and Whately, we have intermediary service currently. In three, in, in, what's the timeframe? Within the year, maybe two, intermediary service is not going to be, licensure at the intermediary level is not going to be available anywhere in Massachusetts. It's not going to be allowed. So, everyone needs to keep in mind, if we do not do this, Deerfield and Whately, and I'm not including Sunderland, because they're already at, just at the basic level and they do a great job, Deerfield and Whately will no longer be providing licensed intermediary service. They will be providing basic intermediary service unless the towns alone, alone, can figure out how to provide 24/7 paramedic level service. State mandate, state code, nothing we can do about it. So, and again, I, I admit it, I'm biased. I believe in partnership. I believe in collaboration, because these three towns are much stronger working together than we are working within our individual silos. That being said, if we do not partner together, and none of the three towns can figure out how to provide paramedic level service 24 hours a day, seven days a week, none of the three towns will have access to paramedic, licensed paramedic level service. End of story. So, I'm going to put in a plug again, that we need to work together as a three-town partnership to figure out how to find common ground and make sure that when people call an ambulance in our three towns, A, worst-case scenario, their life is saved, B, if they have a stroke or if they have a heart attack, they can get the kind of service that gets them out of the hospital faster than they would if the service were a little slower, back to their kids potentially, back to their jobs, putting food on the table, paying their mortgage. All of these things are important to think about. We want to get people back into the community that they live in, so that they can be thriving participants in that community. And a partnership between the three towns is the quickest, surest, and most effective way to accomplish that goal.
Jack?
If I, if I could for just one second, the guy sitting to the right of me, to, to understand the process for two years, this man, two years ago, did not believe in this process. He, he came into it thinking that it, A, that it wasn't necessary, that it was, and it was too expensive. And he, if you just listen to his impassioned talk, you will learn how much he now believes versus how much, it's 180-degree change. And, and to me, when we're talking, it's reassuring to us up here, at least I'll speak for myself, is the question that you had, I can't solve Deerfield's problem that they only have two votes. Okay? Jack and I have talked about this. I can't solve this. I can tell you that many on the committee, we didn't care, because, we, we care because we don't think it's the best way to go, but we don't want to lose the service, because they're going to have some people hold to the old ways, "Well, we have to have more votes, because we're paying more money." We fought about that. We fought about it in public at our meetings, we fought about it in private. And, and the bottom line, actually through the leadership of Deerfield, and I commend Carolyn and Mark, they stood up and they said, "Look, we have to make this work for all of us, not just for Deerfield." And it was through them, because we were saying, just go, if it's going to, if it's going to make it easier, let's just do it." And they, and they came back many times, says, "No, we have to make this work for all of us." So I commend them for not taking the easy route, because they, they have purposely taken the harder route, it seems, in the town, with the town of Deerfield right now. To me, it doesn't care. People about where their ambulances are housed, we, of all the things that we argued and discussed and went back and forth, nobody on this committee cared where the ambulances were going to be located, except that they needed to be in locations that they can respond the quickest. We never once talked about what town it would be in and what it meant to those towns. Our whole thing was it needs to be located in the most central location to respond as quick as possible. We, we looked beyond our boundaries. Matter of fact, the next best choice, if it comes available, may be in Whately, in the industrial park. If that comes available, none of us has a problem. We, and if that's where, if that's where we need to go, we're, we're all on board and say it's going to go. So, so I would say, the nine of us on the committee have worked through this town boundary that you talked about. And, and, but we, don't forget, we've had two, we've had a two-year head start. So, I, I just thought it was important, because I, I know Jonathan where he was and where he is now.
John, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but you'll be next.
My name's John Hannam, I'm the fire chief in Whately. And I have a question for Matt. How long do we have, does the backup truck have to be in service? I have EMTs that live on the outskirts in your red areas. Are they going to be able to be, do the on-call stuff without living in Sunderland Station?
Right. That is something we get to decide.
Okay.
We were hopeful at 10 to 12 minutes, but it's something that we haven't worked on such on.
And the other, my other point, see, now I got the microphone, is my, my consideration for the depleting of the resources. Presently, we have three ambulances in service to three communities. Now we're going to run two. I understand we're going to try to run them both at a paramedic level, but should we put three ambulances in that rotation? Whately Station still is available to store an ambulance. That's.
We have actually, again, we're putting together a plan that's going to say what we think is a minimum. We honestly talked about keeping it in rotation. Jonathan alluded to the fact that we're talking about making it a quasi-volunteer-type system, but we don't know how that would ever work out. But we would hope that the people, the EMTs would come to the table now, once they see that it's serious about going to happen, and resolve those issues. Talk about time, talk about response time, where you, you know, and again, I still am very hopeful that the tones are still going to go out. And if it's a basic level call, that we save our paramedics in our boundaries and help the next call that may be more drastic. We don't have to send that person, that paramedic level out. But again, that's stuff that you guys, that still do this every day and live it, to resolve those issues. I'm not going to sit up here and tell you that, it's got to be 12 minutes or six minutes or whatever.
Just asking.
At the end of the day, John, I would rather know that somebody who lives at 15, 17 minutes away from the station is on their way to staff that backup ambulance than have nobody. And when the call is at the crash point, whether somebody's going to respond.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
A couple of financial questions. You have $110,000 capital budget. Is any portion of that set aside on an annualized basis to replace an ambulance? Or is that just annual cost excluding any ambulance replacement?
No, no.
In other words, are we going to be seeing a $500,000 expense in two years for a new ambulance?
No.
That's include, that's, part of that is to replace the ambulance?
Yes.
Excellent. Is the director a working member?
Absolutely.
Okay. Excellent.
The, going back for a moment to the Board of Oversight, I'm hearing on the street that at least to some people in Deerfield, it's important. Let me ask the two of you from Whately and Sunderland, if the makeup of that committee were other than 2-2-2, two Deerfield, two Whately, two Sunderland, would it be a game-changer for, for the towns of Whately and Sunderland?
It would not be a game-changer in terms of my support for this program. I do believe that it would be a game-changer in terms of the effectiveness and the efficiency of the service that we deliver. I'm not taking this position in belief in a 2-2-2 system just on a whim. The three of us up here happen to be the members of the Board of Oversight of the, of the South County Senior Center. The South County Senior Center is a poster child for regional senior centers in the state now, because of the partnership and cooperation that the three towns exist under, to make sure that we give our seniors the best place possible to spend their days.
We're still looking for help in volunteerism in that area, so anybody that's got suggestions or comments will gladly take them.
A 2-2-2 system, I believe, based upon experience from the different partnerships that we have in the three, amongst the three towns, is the most effective way to implement this type of a, of a, of a startup. That being said, I'm not going to fall on my sword over it, because the patients are the most important thing. I will ask the residents of Deerfield to understand the experiences that we have had over the past several years, in the various partnerships that the three towns have, and how effective they are for residents of Deerfield, Whately, and Sunderland. If the control is, is something that is a game-changer for Deerfield, yeah, I mean, I'm not playing good poker here, I'll let it go. But I don't believe it'll be as good a system.
Skip, and I think when you were at the, the meeting in Whately Center School, I think I said that, I think, I said that to you personally, and I said that in the open meeting, that to us, it's more important to make this program work. And we, we're not, we're not going to fight over that, because it's, the, the program is more important. I agree with Jonathan, the po, the program is more important than a hypothetical one-person vote. I agree with Jonathan. And, and Mark?
We have a lot of experience up here doing this type of thing, and I, and I just, and I know I'm saying the same thing again. I hope the residents of all three towns understand that they elected us to rely on the experiences and the implementation skills that we've developed over the years. It's for the best if it's a 2-2-2 vote.
There's a lot of trust involved. We work together a lot.
Yeah.
I'm going to get the microphone there, too.
Thank you.
Also, too, I'd ask, why not give it a chance to work? It's not, this isn't something that's etched in stone. We can change it if we need to. We can change it if we need to, but let's give it a chance to work. We need to think differently. Because if we didn't do this, this would be essentially, as Jonathan alluded to earlier, this would have been forced on us one way or the other, and you're going to start saying all sorts of other things changing in the future. We can't think the way we have thought. And if a business were to come in and run this, well, we all know what would happen. When one business buys another business, how many people have ever experienced that? They're going to look at redundancies and say, "It's not efficient to have an ambulance here, an ambulance here, an ambulance here. I'm going to cut them. Cut them down to two, all the rest are gone." That's not efficient. And this is one of the things that we're really trying to keep the focus on through this whole process, is we're focused, as you've heard mentioned many times, on the service, not past political issues and things like that. We have a need that we still have to meet, no matter what we do. We have to take care of people and save people. And that's the most important guiding thing here. Obviously, you know, the finances are important, too, and everything, obviously. But we need to keep our eyes on that prize. The service is the most important thing. And like we've mentioned, we all want this to work. We have a vested interest. And I think you'll see a marked contrast in how we're operating here compared to people in a certain city south of here right now. We want to work together and make it work. We all care about our communities, and we care about the service, rather than getting hung up on past history and things. We want to make it work and look forwards, not backwards.
Thank you, Billy.
Hi, Liz Kuler from South Deerfield. I have two points. I've been working with the EDS for seven years. I didn't even know anybody on the other committee, I just saw an ad in the paper, so I went and volunteered. I didn't know Carolyn, I didn't know Mark. I certainly didn't know any other selectmen or border health people from any other town. But I can tell you in the seven years that we haven't had one argument, there's always been cooperation. Just seeing Margaret leaning against the wall over there. We were setting up, all set, we had like our last meeting, and all of a sudden, the sign for the road, the electronic sign fell through on our end. We put out an email, and half an hour, she emailed us back, we got a slide, what do you want on it? We get tables from all over the county, Sunderland, Whately, you know, anything that we really need. So in that respect, I mean, I have, I think this will work fine. I mean, you have professionals here. My second point is, I worked on a Bay State Medical Center. So chances are, if you're in a backup ambulance, your problems are not over, okay? They are the first responders. You still have other issues once you come to us in the hospital. So, you know, I'm asking that you give us the best chance to help, for us to help you guys out, because we do have only ifs. And I worked with babies now for the last 25 years, and we have had only ifs, only if they had gotten here sooner. And it's absolutely devastating, the parents to come in and see their baby lying lifeless in the morgue. And I don't want to see that happening to anyone here. So as soon as you can get there, I mean, you think it's, I mean, babies have, in utero, they have strokes. Bad things happen to pregnant women, they get in car accidents, you know, they have decreased fetal movement, whatever. It's not just the elderly. And the thing of it is, with babies, half the medications are not available, because they don't apply to babies, they can't have them. We have sophisticated equipment now in our hospitals, that if you get to us fast, we can take care of that baby. So please don't vote this down, or feel bad against it, just because of, you know, voting issues and stuff like that.
Right after Billy, if you want to get up.
Phil Swayze, I'm the fire chief in South Deerfield. Throughout this whole process, just don't forget about the firefighters, I mean, we're here as backup as well, you know, we're more than willing to help out any way, shape, or form. My second question is in regards to budget. Have we looked at the percent of receivables as to what we get back from the different services? I know when we're taking a look at the budget, we're splitting it up by the factor that you're using, but are your receivables, I mean, is one town going to be subsidizing other towns?
Absolutely. There's absolutely no way we could predict where the calls are going to come from. So basically, on different years, one town's going to be a lot less than the other towns, but it's an even mix, number-wise, for the amount of services being provided. We also have a small deficiency in the fact that we have two different paying groups, or billing-out groups, so that basically percentage received are predicted out slightly differently, but once it becomes a single billing process, it should balance it out, and it would be, it will offset the money put into the budget from those particular towns and services.
Billy, if I could take a moment also, we'd like to thank also South Deerfield Fire for making the offer of their facilities. We knew, we went to the Prudential Committee, we had a very good discussion with them, and they had a meeting where they voted to allow us in there, into their, it's their home, and we're going to be visitors, and we appreciate that very much.
This is so timely, really. I'm a user of the services. My husband had a heart attack Labor Day weekend, I'm a Sunderland resident, at dinnertime. They were at the police department, was there instantaneously, but we did have to end the ambulance, but we did have to wait quite a while for paramedics. The weekend after that, I had to call 911 again, in the middle of the 1:30 a.m., and again, two policemen showed up from the Sunderland Police Department, very timely, but it did to end the ambulance. I think it was from South Deerfield, I don't remember. But anyway, had to wait a long time for paramedics from Bay State Health. So as a user, this is only a good thing. I don't care about any of the politics, the finances. You saved a life. You need to do this. Waiting is a huge problem when you're a user of the facilities and the staff, so. Just want to say, this is a wonderful idea, and I was so glad that I got that phone call from Margaret, alerting us to this meeting tonight, so, thank you.
Unless there are any more questions, I just want to, once again, thank the, oh, mammoth.
This has all been so heartfelt and emotional, and there's fiscal, and there's the emotion, and the emotion keeps getting pushed. What does this mean to our tax dollars? Where's the money coming from to fund this, and then when you put the budget all together, what's it going to cost? I didn't get that one.
I'm from Deerfield. I have that one.
But the other thing about all this humanitarianism and cooperation and everything, then why isn't everybody pitching the same amount of money regardless? Why is it that Deerfield gets to pitch in the most amount of money with the least amount of representation?
I think you can answer that question yourself. We're going to get the lion's share of the services.
We do, we are the ones who are, we are.
We're paying for what we get.
We're paying for it, and I'm just going to understand why the one man, one vote demands.
That has nothing to do with the money aspect of it, those are two separate issues. Make sure that everybody understands that basically, we will be paying pretty close to the services that we use in the town of Deerfield, because we use that much of the service. We are going to be.
We're cooperative, we're, 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 we're just almost good for everybody. That's what I enjoy the most about this.
But it's true.
It is, but it's not in terms of the money.
Yes, it is. That's the sad part about it, as far as the.
You're talking percentages for one thing, and then you're talking that the percentages don't matter for the other arguments.
Sorry, I missed that.
The voting levels don't matter, but the money's there, but us having equal representation on the boards, that doesn't matter.
It doesn't.
Well, that's fine, that's a contradiction in terms.
Not really, because if you, if you look at what was presented, even when the numbers, even when the numbers got evened out, the system still didn't work. We may have gotten the numbers to be corrected, but it didn't change how things actually worked. So the numbers didn't make a difference. The difference is going to be made by the townspeople, paying attention to the service, and watching what's going on, and being part of it. You can call that touchy-feely if you'd like to, but the reality is, if you're not getting your dollars out of this thing, we at the Board of Selectmen need to hear it, and you need to hear it loudly. But the reality is, we've worked this for two years, and we think this is where, because money is a big issue, this is where we get the biggest bang for our bucks in the town of Deerfield.
I'm not opposed to it also, I'm one man and one vote. I had, I lied earlier, I didn't pay attention. And what I did, and I tried to look at roadways, and.
Use the microphone, please, because I'm nervous. Pretend it's karaoke.
Don't, don't we all?
So, I went online, and I said, "Okay, how many roadways does Deerfield have?" Because I could have a heart attack on the way up to Clarkdale, or, you know, and so how many roadways? I said, "Ah, Sunderland's got to have more roadways." I always get lost in that town. And, nope, we have more roadways. I said, "Whately, it goes on forever." Nope. And you showed the slide where it had Deerfield, and it had Whately, and it had Sunderland. Deerfield overpowers it. And so this coverage is not just houses, it's just not people, but it's the amount of roadways and landmass, because Sunderland people can be in our town and have a heart attack, we can have a heart attack in Whately, kids on the playgrounds in Deerfield play in Whately, in Sunderland, strong services are needed there. People in Whately use the Deerfield Library, and Deerfield residents use the Sunderland Library. It's a very cooperative setup, and I just think that cooperative makes sense, and I appreciate the fact that that odd little vote won't be a game-changer from you, because I am hearing from residents in town that that's important. But I also do agree, and I've noticed a real improvement, just in the feedback, and just the way the Franklin, the South County Partnership for the Senior Center is working. So that's really been a good model, and I think you bring up a good point that way. So, I'm sure the voters will, will vote, so.
I just hope that, basically, they'll give it a chance.
Yep. And, but we do have the biggest landmass, and it can happen anywhere.
And the most roads.
Right.
On behalf of Tom Clark, please don't have any of those medical emergencies between 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., as he's trying to make a living.
Ralph Healy from Deerfield. It's getting late, and I don't want to belabor things, and I think all the words have more or less been said here tonight, I really feel that way. I've only got involved in this whole topic of ambulances consciously within the last few weeks. And my background is kind of manufacturing and engineering, and I try to break everything down that way. And I can honestly tell you, I have spent hours and hours and hours, from 4:00 on the morning on all day sometimes, just thinking about this. And thinking about Deerfield, and Whately, and Sunderland, I'm thinking about the roads, the distances, the types of calls, the finger cuts, the major emergencies. Skip challenged me one night with, "Well, what if it's a bus on Route 91?" And this, this is another type of thing that goes into it. We don't know where the accident may happen, or how many people. And then I've heard all the other sides about the vote, and about the money angle, and I'm consciously trying to think of the best thing for all of us, for the people. And yet, the first thing that keeps coming out to me is safety. This is, I mean, we want fire protection, we want police. As some of you are aware, I was very concerned about our Department of Public Works not having a safe environment to work in. And these are things that I feel as though we have a real responsibility for, a moral responsibility. And I know the town needs all kinds of money for all kinds of things, be it schools, and fire, police, and administrative, but you have to set priorities, and it just keeps coming back to me that this ambulance situation is a priority. So I said, "All right, well, then let's all towns go separately." Well, if, and I asked Matt, "What level are we at?" And we're at a basic level. So if we, and it's not good enough. So if we need to improve it, and especially if there's mandates coming down, we have to improve it, then each town would have to have at least two ambulances, we'd have to have the paramedics, I guess you'd call it, everybody would have to be upgraded, and we know we can't afford it. We absolutely can't. So then you start to talk about regionalization like schools and so forth, which years ago I was not really a big fan of, and it would be nice if we didn't have to, but we do. And, and so then we get into this thing, and we keep talking Deerfield, Whately, and Sunderland, and, and I think the game changes, because as somebody said here, and that's my thing, it's like a company. You have to sort of forget about the geographic location and the town structure, you have to think about, do we want a safe ambulance service for all of our residents? So you sort of get driven into this thing. There's, there's one bottom line to it, and I, and I feel as though, right now, this regionalization, and maybe that's the wrong word, this, this company, maybe, is the thing to call it, is, is the answer. Collaborative. I hate that word, because I never know what it meant, but, anyway, collaborative effort. So, I mean, I could talk on for hours, but I do want to say that I have honestly thought through all of these details. But until just today, I got hold of this, what was that report, Baxter, Baxter Report? And I, and I read it, and I, and I thought, I thought of all these little angles and details of distance and so forth, and I missed half of it. I mean, the Baxter Report has just got so much more, it's a very, very complicated subject. So in order to break this down, to be unequivocally fair on the votes or percentages, I think it's almost impossible. So it gets back to, do we want a safer ambulance service or not? And if we do, I think we've got to join hands. The only question I'd say is, well, why did it happen to be three towns? Why wasn't it four towns or five towns? Well, I can't answer that, but I guess it's because you get down to geography after a while.
We can answer that. When it first started, we did ask, we did have, Conley was, was asked to participate. They believed because of the distance, that they weren't going to be a good match, and we can respect that. We also talked to Hatfield. Hatfield was very interested in the beginning, but then toward, they came to the first two or three meetings, but then they decided to, that at the present time, they were getting, they get their paramedic base backup from North Hampton, which is just right next door to them. So we did, we did try to expand, and hopefully, you know, if it works, and we've talked about this in the past, if it works, maybe there's going to be other towns that would want to sign on to our regional, and we've talked about that. And I think your newest selectman, Mr. Wolfram, has talked about where the best place to put paramedic service ambulances would not be in Greenfield, but to get them out into the lesser-served areas, because that's where you need them, so they can respond and get back. So that is something that we're looking at, absolutely.
Right, right. Thank you.
I just wanted to make Whately residents aware that I did do a little spreadsheet on Whately facts for what our present ambulance service costs, what the new ambulance service will cost, and how much it would affect the tax dollars. So I do have a bunch of these for Whately residents. I didn't want to hand them out to everybody, because it doesn't apply to every town, so this is just for Whately, and if anyone's interested, I've got them.